I'm going to call the meeting to order because it's five o'clock and probably somebody's watching. Normally at this time, we would have information for individuals addressing the council. We place that at the end of the agenda, so at this point in time, we will ask the roll call from the City Clerk.
The member Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEagren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. And the comments in regard to individuals who want to address the council will be made at the regular council meeting, whom we convene at six o'clock. And we have a closed session item. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have six closed session items. Two are pertaining to existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. They are listed as Items A and Items C, and the case names are set forth on the agenda along with the case numbers. One is for the Airport Authority, one is for the city. We have two real estate property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. Again, one is for the Airport Authority and one is for the city, and the properties and the parties are set forth on the agenda. And then we have two anticipated litigation items pursuant to government code 5495-6.9, both of which pertain to the city. One is pursuant to subsection D4 of 5495-6.9, the other is pursuant to subsection D2. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular meeting.
Thank you. At this time, if there's no questions from the council, we'll adjourn to executive session. We're two minutes late and starting, my apologies. This is the regular council meeting of November 5, 2013. We have come from the closed session. Mr. Attorney, do you have any announcements to make?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had closed session on six items. They're all set forth on the agenda. Two were potential litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9, two were real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8, and two were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. All of the information related to the agenda items is set forth on the agenda, including the parties and the litigation. At this point, there's no reportable action. We had to adjourn and will be reconvening at the conclusion of the regular session. To the extent there is reportable action at the conclusion of that continued session, we will report it at the conclusion.
We had a roll call earlier before we entered executive session, but since we're in a regular session, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Member Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEagren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. At this time, we'll have the invocation of Pastor Ray Gemma and Jubilee Community Church. Please remain standing, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by the Victorville Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Father, we begin this evening by asking your blessing on our city. We ask your blessing on our leaders. Give them wisdom and insight into every decision they have to make. And we ask your blessing on this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you want me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the river of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to come down front. We have a proclamation that I'll present to the community services for the Victorville Recycling Week, and I'll ask Dana Armstrong to come up, and when we finish that, there is her certificate. I will be reading a letter at that time, and we'll have three employees that will come up. And I'll tell you now, so we can be prepared, move along quickly, that three individuals would be Alex Cruz, Andy Villagomez, and Khalif Liggett. So first would be--
There's actually four, Mayor Cox.
Pardon?
Liz Becerra is also included in that group.
Oh, Liz. Sorry. Yes, absolutely. And so I will go down for the recycling. Dana Armstrong is the solid waste manager. She will be accepting this. This proclamation I'm going to read. This is a city proclamation. Whereas Victorville residents and businesses dispose of more than 70,000 tons of solid waste each year, and this material is buried in the county's Victorville waste at a cost of over $2 million a year. Whereas the solid waste contains valuable materials, including metal, paper, glass, and plastic, which could be used to make new products. And whereas by recycling these materials, Victorville residents and businesses can save valuable natural resources, provide industry with the raw materials needed to make new products, conserve landfill space, and reduce refuse disposal. And whereas California State Assembly Bill 939 requires all municipalities to reduce the amount of waste sent to the landfill by 50 percent. So granted this proclamation, we also proclaim November the 4th, the week of November 4th, to be Victorville Recycling Week. I present this to Dana Armstrong.
Thank you very much, Mayor Cox, and members of the City Council. I'd also like to introduce my colleague Sharon Mitchell from Burt Tech Waste Industries, because in just a moment, you'll know why she is a very important person as well. This is the seventh year that we've done Victorville Recycles Week. Our focus in having a week is to try and get residents to think more about our recycling programs. We have great programs, and our residents and businesses do a great job participating in them, but we can always do better. Always, always do better. As Mayor Cox read in the proclamation, we spend over $2 million a year on trash disposal, and that truly is a waste of money and resources. I think that money would be much better in the residents' pockets, rather than paying the city to pay the county to bury the garbage. Our focus on Victorville Recycles Week is on schools, and this is where Sharon comes in. The city, together with Burt Tech, we cosponsor a competition for local schools. They complete a variety of activities, they earn points, and then the school with the most points wins cash prizes. So far this year, we have 11 schools signed up. Sharon has scheduled over 50 in-class presentations. She's already done 30. She's still standing. So that's 1,500 kids she's already spoken to in the last week and a half, nine assemblies, two tours of our MRF, and starting next week, we'll be receiving thousands of posters, hundreds of recycled sculptures, and hopefully we'll get dozens of YouTube videos as part of the new contest. So we're very excited about it. Our hope is that by educating the kids, they will go home, take the message home, tell their parents, and the program and the city and the community will benefit. Thank you very much.
Did you get a picture? It come to my attention that we had Liz Becerra's crew that really did a fast action. Liz, if you would bring your individuals down, Andy, Alex, and Khalif. I want to read the letter while they're coming down. This is a letter from the Victor Valley Church of Christ, and by Gil Allen, Larry Allen, Lynn Alsop, Paul A.C., and Tony Rose. "I'm sure you know about our church property being vandalized with major graffiti. Our thanks to you and your Department of Public Works for swift response to clean up our facilities so completely. We cannot say enough good things about Liz Becerra, who took a personal interest in the misfortune and hastily dispatched a crew who restored our property to a like-new condition. The team of Alex Cruz, Andy Villagomez, and Khalif Liggett..." Liggett? Liggett? I got it right? "We're so professional and courteous. They work so quickly and efficiently in a powerful way." And I remember that day. "We just cannot praise them enough. Again, thanks to you, Mayor Cox, and the City of Victorville, as the entire community for such wonderful caring response. And from the City Council to all of you, we give you so thanks and are so proud of you." So we have these four that I'm going to present you individually. Liz, did you want to say a few words?
As you taught me, I'm only as good as the guys behind me. And they're not behind me, they're next to me. So with those guys right there, you have, and myself, 50 years of experience removing graffiti.
Thank you. And we're only as good up here as all of our employees, so thank all of you. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is for appeal hearings, which there are none. City Clerk, do you have revisions to our current agenda?
Yes, there are two revisions for tonight's agenda. The first one is regarding public hearing item B3. The revisions are on the dais and available for the public. On this item, there's a request for continuance of the item from staff, and attached to the memo from staff is also an objection that has been received from one of the property owners in this case. The second revision is concerning public hearing item B4. There's a revised copy of the ordinance available on the dais and for the public. These are non-substantive changes that were made by the city attorney, and those are the only revisions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. In regard to item number B3, request to continue that, however, we will conduct the public hearing. For clarification, is the request to continue the public hearing or to hold the public hearing and continue the item only?
The request would be to open the public hearing, take any testimony, and then continue the item to December 17.
Okay. At this time, then, we have a public hearing on item B1. This is a public hearing to hear arguments for-- wait a minute. Did I get that right? Okay. Foreign guests placing liens on property that are delinquent on their unpaid transient occupancy taxes by adopting Resolution Number 13-053. I'm going to open the public hearing on that item. I believe I have one card from Chris Chohann to speak on that item. If you'll come on down, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. The only request we've been making all this time is if they can give us some time to make these payments, and if they could give us at least three or four payments on this, and we are ready to pay all the amounts. So I would just request you guys, for the last time, if you could make us at least three or four payments, and it would be a resolution of the problem. That's all I want to say.
Soon as we conclude the hearing, we will ask staff to comment on this and possibly the attorney.
Okay. We have talked to Mr. Chuck Boukay about this, and he said he would talk to you guys, but I don't know what happened about this.
Okay.
But that's the best resolution we have right now.
All right.
Instead of going to appeal and all that, longering the problem, you know, just solve it like this.
Okay, Mr. Webb will come up shortly after we conclude. Anyone else wants to speak on this item? Anyone else wants to speak on this item?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Webb?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. I discussed this option with the employees involved. My understanding is that this entire process takes some time. If you act on this tonight, the employees will do everything they can to work out payments, and if paid and when paid, will rescind the action, possibly before it even goes on to the property taxes. So there is a clock that starts ticking, and that they are more than happy to work with the applicants on a payment schedule within that time, once this is approved. At this time, though, they did not deny working with people who brought forward the payment in full, or anything agreeable in the hearings, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
City Clerk? Yes. So they were attempting to work. If the applicants are willing to work, the city is more than willing to work during this process, but we still act that you approve this, and during that, we will continue to work for a payment schedule or anything else in order to get these payments.
Just for clarification, we had one individual to speak, but we have three items that we're having the hearing on. Does that individual represent one of those ends or all three? Just as in. Okay. All right. We assume, then, that if we could-- Okay, we're going to let you have that negotiation outside. But it seems to me that we need to work with these individuals who want to make the payments. It seems to me they're trying to make it right. We want to make it right as painlessly as we can. They want to meet the obligation. It seems to me that we don't continue the hearing. We've concluded the hearing, and if we pass on the resolution, there will be a time, and you will keep the council informed when the deadline is. You'll also keep them informed, and if you have no choice, you will file to meet a deadline, but otherwise work out the agreement for payment. So does that need to be noted in the resolution, or being in the minutes sufficient, Mr. Attorney?
What I would recommend is, again, proceed with the adoption of the resolution. The concern I'd have is that you're treating these individuals differently than those hotels that have already paid their transient occupancy taxes without asking for a payment schedule. I think what Mr. Webb is suggesting, which makes a lot of sense, is it's going to take some time upon the adoption of the resolution to even implement the provisions of the resolution, which is to lien the property, which will provide some time for these property owners to make the city whole with respect to these amounts.
Well, my understanding is that we adopt this, but it doesn't get recorded in the morning at eight o'clock.
That is correct.
And there's some time that goes by, and so he has a window--
And it would take some time to implement the lien procedures in any case, but I would, again, direct staff to proceed, assuming, and to work with the property owners to try and get it resolved as quickly as possible.
Okay. With that understanding, then, the chair is open for a motion on the resolution.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Webb, if you run into a problem or need further action, bring it quickly back to the City Council, otherwise we believe that you'll work this out. Thank you. And the owners, thank you very much for working. Next public hearing item is the Resolution 13056, Proposed Vimos Renewable Energy Resources Procurement Plan. Resolution 13056 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Establishing a Renewable Energy Resources Procurement Plan for Victorville Municipal Utility Services in furtherance of Resolution Number 11051, and authorizing the taking of certain other actions in connection therewith." Before I open the hearing, are there any questions of staff? If there are no questions, I'm going to open the hearing at this time on Resolution 13056, which is number two on the agenda. I don't have any cards for anyone to speak on that, or for anyone to speak on that item. Seeing now one, having no cards, I will close the public hearing. There's no questions of staff. We are ready for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEagren. Motion carries unanimously.
The third public hearing. This is a public hearing that is scheduled as a resolve action by the Planning Commission. The subject matter is PLN 13-00010, Billboard Relocation Agreement and Site Plan. While there has been a request to continue this to the next meeting, because the public hearing has been scheduled, we will open the public hearing. We will take testimony from anyone that wants to speak. We will not close the hearing, but-- Is that correct? Not close the hearing?
Excuse me? Not to leave the hearing open?
Yes. Leave the hearing open. Continue until the next meeting, but we will have questions of staff. Okay, Mr. McEagren is going to abstain at this time and leave the chambers. These four council members on this. Before we open the public hearing, are there any questions of the staff? I will have questions after the public--
Just a clarification, Mr. Mayor. You had just now mentioned continuing it to the next meeting. It'll actually be continued to December 17.
December 17.
Oh, December 17. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. All right. Open the public hearing at this time on PLN 13-0010, Billboard Relocation Agreement and Site Plan, the Lamar Companies, as the applicant. There's no one going to speak at this time. I will continue this item as a public hearing, leaving the public hearing open until December 17. Are there questions of staff? I have several questions. I tried to get through the agreement, which is very lengthy, and I understand that there was a current sign that exists on the property, but when I went and looked at it, there's two signs located in this area. I also noted that the minimum height of the proposed billboard is 17 feet, but I didn't find a maximum. So I guess it's 100 or 200. It's not real, but I wondered why it was a minimum. Then I realized, because we're going to relocate the existing sign, it has to be above the sign. And then I wondered how many years it's going to be there, and apparently it's going to be there forever, as long as everyone's in agreement. So there's no maximum time. There's no maximum square footage to the sign. With a minimum height of 17 feet, but no maximum square feet, and no prohibition against the company that presently exists to use the billboard. And I suggest to the City Council, if that occurs, every business on the freeway should be entitled to the very same thing, which means every business should have a billboard advertising their business on site. And I know that's not the intent of the council in any way, shape, or form. Now, I was informed that this is a special ordinance by the city that allows individuals, billboard companies, to take down three billboards and erect one. And I suppose I voted on that, because I think it's a good idea, but I did not understand that it was to take down three old billboards on telephone posts and erect a brand-new one on an existing business, because we currently restrict the amount of signs for existing businesses. I see enough problems with this, though I'd like to continue it until we can bring the other ordinance back to see if that's really true, because I would have a hard time approving something like this for the cask and cleaver, and turn right around and say to Marie Callis, "You can't do the same thing." Or all of the automobile businesses, where we have one sign because we only restrict the number of signs to be viewed from the freeway. Why couldn't they each one have a billboard on their property? I think this sets one of the worst precedents that I've seen. I really, really have a problem with this. So I'm going to put those questions in writing and some more, direct them to the staff, and by the time we have the next meeting, hopefully they will answer those. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe this is the greatest thing in the world. But I currently know a business right now that's been struggling to develop the property, and they can't because there's a billboard on it. But it seems to me that all they have to do is find three old billboards they don't want, and he can develop the property and leave the billboard in place, which is designed to be viewed from the freeway. That's contrary to what our sign ordinance says, so I have some real problems with it. Don't expect any answers now, but I do want to alert staff of the questions that's going to be coming to them. There may be very simple answers, but I didn't find them in the staff report. Council members? There are no comments from the council members. This item is continued. No objections, no more questions, no more questions of staff. Apparently none. We go to item number four. Item number four is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 2303, Code Amendment Development 13-000-4. Since this is an ordinance, Madam Clerk, do you read the title of this?
Yes, at the conclusion of the public hearing.
At the conclusion of the public hearing. If there are questions of staff, I will open the public hearing at this time. I don't have any cards from anyone. I have no one approaching the podium to ask to make any comments. I will therefore close-- You have a question, sir? Come right on up. That's why we're having this public hearing.
Forgive me, I'm new to the area, and I'm new to this process, so I'm just wondering if maybe some clarification be given for novices like myself as to what this is and what it's doing?
Yes.
Okay.
We will have staff do that.
Okay, great.
Primarily clarifications, but I'll ask staff to make that presentation. No further comments. I'll close the public hearing at this time. And there was a question, there was a comment earlier that this is to make corrections and changes, but fairly nothing new, apparently. Staff, could someone come to the podium?
Yes, that's correct. The building department or building division changes to the code are to update it to the current codes, to the 2013 state codes. The Title V Business License, that section is proposed to be brought into Title 16, the Development Code. That would be the major change, although we discovered recently that the actual text for those changes wasn't included in the resolution for the Planning Commission, so we will be bringing the text back to the council after the Planning Commission reviews it. The other changes-- oh, in terms of also to the Code Enforcement section of the Development Code, George Duran has proposed updating revisions to the abatement process, to other aspects of the appeal process and things like that.
All right.
It's basically updates.
Any further questions of staff and council members? So we're updating one item. I have a question. On 13.32.060, I had a notation to ask Code Enforcement to begin enforcing sweeping of litter into the gutters. I noticed all over town, not only the homeowners and property owners and lawn services, but they use the blower, blow everything into the street. And yet, my understanding is that it's prohibited anyway, except when I read 13.32.060, it says deleted entirely. So if it's deleted, where was it placed, or are there two sections covering it? Because this is a problem that more and more people are blowing the gutter into the street and expecting the city, I guess, to come by and pick it up. It's just a bad habit. It reflects badly on the neighborhood. It reflects badly on the city that we need to start enforcing this.
Yes, this section, these were nuisance sections that were moved into the Code Enforcement section to address private property, and thus they were covered, so they were, in a sense, deleted from 13.
So it was deleted from 13, but it's not deleted from the code itself?
No, it's still enforceable, and it's been relocated to Title 16, Chapter 6, for Code-- Code Enforcement.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council to staff? If there are no questions, the chair is open for a motion.
I'll read the ordinance of, the title of ordinance 2303. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, approving amendment DEV 13-00004, a code amendment amending and incorporating Title V Business License and Regulations into Title 16 and other relevant titles of the Victorville Municipal Code, revising, updating, and integrating various Code Enforcement sections into applicable titles of the Victorville Municipal Code, and updating the International Property Maintenance Code and the Building and Fire Regulations of Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Thank you. And, sir, did that get your answer? Did that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Chair is now open for a motion.
Motion to wait further reading and introduced by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
We now have the consent calendar. Items C1 through C9. If there are no reasons to pull any one of those items from, we can take one motion to approve all of them.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Portem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Written, starting with D1, request City Council to approve a general services agreement with West Coast Arborist, Inc., for projects numbers ES 14-014, in an amount not to exceed $80,000. Do we have a motion? Second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2 is a request, to request the City Council to approve their request for additional appropriation in the amount of $70,000 from gas tax funds for asphalt crack sealing and repair projects.
Mr. Mayor had a question.
Yes, question. Councilmember Kennedy.
Was, is this just normal wear and tear? Was there anything inadequate about the last asphalt project?
What this is really is just supplementing routine maintenance that's already ongoing. We have about $70,000 of, excuse me, Proposition 1B money that is left over, and so what we wanted to do is use that money on a future street project. We have to have that spent by the end of this fiscal year, and in replacement of that, we were going to take gas tax money that was already budgeted for that street project and spend it on more crack sealing, and this would be done by in-house crews. So basically, it's just supplementing the maintenance that is already ongoing.
To what extent does it extend life, and, I mean, are there any general rules?
It, crack sealing does extend life of pavements, especially on those that are in good to fair condition. Once the pavement gets in poor condition, it has, it still helps, but it's on a downward curve, but the best thing to do is to continue to keep the good to fair pavements in repair.
Thanks, Brian.
Other questions? Chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 3, request to release the remaining 20% of the Social Securities for Track 17133.
Is that item D3, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. D3, sorry. Oh, wait a minute. Did I get on the wrong one? Oh, I did. Sorry. Item D3, request City Council to water contract Arizona Pipeline Company in the amount of $65,460 for the construction of the replacement natural gas line at Southern California Logistics Airport. Sorry about that.
Motion by Mayor Portem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. May I get a vote from you, Mayor Cox? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Before, request City Council reject all previous bids for the Innovation Way Safety Lighting Received August 13, 2013, and to award a contract to Steiny and Company, Inc., in the amount of $27,684, plus contingency and construction engineering for the construction of the safety lighting project at Southern California Logistics Airport.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Cox, may I get a vote? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I want a, just a two-minute break. Carol Lee, could you come here just a second? That's, this is why I was reading that as 3. 4. So, okay. All right. Okay. I got it. All right. Item 5, this item's moved to consent. D6, request City Council to approve Amendment Number 2 to the San Marino County Transportation Authority Construction Cooperative Agreement for the La Mesa-Nest Valley I-15 Interchange Project. Item D6.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Portem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, a request, San Marino County Association Sandbag, San Bernardino Associated Governments, Desert Consolidation Study, DCS, presentation of the consolidation of Victor Valley Transit Authority, VVTI, members and Barstow Area Transit. BAT. Barstow Area Transit. Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, we have an individual. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Mitch Oliverman, Director of Transit Rail Programs at Sandbag. I won't go into what Sandbag is. I think you know what that is. One of my jobs is to oversee the rail and the transit projects in the county. Couple of years ago, we started looking at, is there a better way to do transit in the desert, since we have NAT, BAT, and VVTI? Needles Area Transit, Barstow Area Transit, Victor Valley Transit Authority. So we met with the VVTI members, and we also met with Barstow and Needles through use of a consultant. We examined the makeup. Is there a way we could consolidate all three agencies into one? The short of it is that we determined that Needles, well, we'll just leave Needles where they are. It's two hours from Barstow. It's a very small operation. They run one bus during the day. Their yard is just a little, small fenced-in area with a bus, a little trailer, and an outhouse. So a very small operation. It's more effective just to leave them to what they do. But looking at Barstow, how Barstow runs, they contract service. The city staff runs it. So what we came up with is that if we consolidate the Barstow area into the member agencies of VVTI into a new authority, so it would not be called VVTI anymore, it'd be some other new authority name, we'd end up with a seven-member board, two supervisors, and then five city council members, one being one from Barstow. It, with that, the administrative costs do go up doing this consolidation. VVTI would most likely have to add five people to administer this larger contract. So with the addition of the five people and taking on more of the administrative, the administrative costs go up, but the overall cost to all the member agencies would go down about $100,000 a year. So what that means, and the LTF funding that you receive through Sandbag, well, actually indirectly that you, the City of Victorville receives through VVTI, LTF is a local transportation fund. It's a pot of money that comes through the state. It's a portion on population to Sandbag to use throughout the county. It's a five, or a quarter percent of all sales tax in the state. So we get money, we redistribute it through the county for different transit projects. For those areas that the LTF is not used entirely for transit, which is the Victor Valley area, Barstow, and Morongo Basin, whatever's left over goes to the cities. So right now, you get about a, you will end up receiving about $100,000 more a year in LTF for streets and roads by the regulation. Barstow receives a little bit more than that. Right now, all their LTF goes for transit. When this happens, they'll end up receiving a little bit of leftover LTF for their use. So what this does is it creates an agency combining two of them into one, so it's more cost-effective. At Sandbag, we only have to deal with one instead of two. Contract-wise, it'd be one contract to run all service between here and Barstow, rather than have two contractors and two management. So that's why you end up saving money in the long run. So what are the next steps? At Sandbag, you're the last council I've gone to. What we will do is to facilitate between the VVTI member agencies and the Barstow council, staff from all the agencies together to look at the assets, to look at the funding sources. The documentation needs to be done. There's work that we have to do with the Federal Transit Administration with the new agency name. Same thing with Caltrans, because some of the grants come through Caltrans. So there's a lot of things to pull together. Once that's pulled together and we have the draft documents, then those would be circulated back through all the cities and the city legal councils and the county, and then all the councils and the county supervisors would have to take action to approve the new JPA, and presumably, at that time, action to dissolve the old JPAs, or we may look at amending the existing JPA into a new one. So that's it. In summary, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions from the councilmembers? We have, we have our Sandbag rep, and we have our Transit rep. Bobbed in this all along. Okay. Apparently, there are no questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any comments from our two reps on those two agencies? Sandbag or Victor Valley Transit?
Just that this has been thoroughly vetted through our board, and it's been, you know, gone over several times, and I'm comfortable with everything.
Councilmember Vias?
And I would concur. At Sandbag, we have seen this on numerous occasions, and as well as the rest of the board, so I think it's a thing to move forward on.
It sounds like it'll be a benefit to everyone, so. Okay, can we have a motion?
Motion by Mayor Portem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is D8, award of a contract to West Coast Netting, Inc., for the installation of ball field netting for the first Assembly of God recreation field.
Motion by Mayor Portem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
And item D9, AMS Anderson Air Conditioning Construction Agreement for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Installations Building 676. Questions?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
D10, resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority for the Sherwood Villa apartment projects. Apparently, someone saw that and called me and wondered how the city could issue bonds, and these are not the city's bonds at all. In fact, the city's not even involved. Comments from the staff? Any clarifications?
I think that characterizes it very well. These are state bonds that you have some approval authority over simply because they're being spent in your city.
Not city bonds and low financial obligations whatsoever.
They will not appear on our books.
And it will not appear on our residence property tax.
It will not.
It will not. Good point. Good point.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
D11, consideration of approval of stipulated judgment which would settle the case of City Victorville Tetra Hydra resulting in a, Hydra, resulting in a permanent injunction. I think this has been discussed. Link, any comments, questions? Hearing on, motion is in order.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Cox, on D12, I will be abstaining as Ex-Quadrum as a client of my firm.
All right. This is submitted by Keith Metzler on behalf of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, requesting the approval of termination agreement with Ex-Quadrum subject to minor nonsubstantive changes. Any questions? Mr. Metzler's not here. Doug is here. No questions. There is a motion and second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Portem McEckern absent.
That concludes those items on the agenda. We are now at the public comment period. I will go back and read what we have for the record normally. This is a time and place listed for individuals to talk to the City Council or members of the audience. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak, all communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting in courtesy, and decorum is expected. I merely would like to point out that while we invite anyone to speak to the council, this is not an agendized item. We have no idea what the subject matter is going to be, and therefore, we cannot discuss nor debate that. Should we have known what the matter was, it would have been placed on the council agenda. Other individuals then could have appeared and spoke for or against whatever the subject matter is. It's a requirement of the state that we place this here. It puts us in an odd position, because individuals come and ask us questions. We can't answer. We can't debate. We can't discuss, but we can listen. So I have one card from, Margie Simpson, who would like to address the City Council.
Thank you. Margie Simpson, Victorville. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. In front of you is a block, and this was created by me and with the powers of, yes, with the powers of Barbara Wal, Powers, her husband did the blocks for me, and this is something I had invented for my brother. My brother was a homeless person, and he often would get up and walk about like they do in Australia. So when my brother passed, I designed this block, because he was a person that just took off and walked. And I designed the block for him, but I thought it would be a good addition for the walking tour of Old Town, which is what I put on the back. I've become involved in Old Town and wanted to tell you that our first festival was successful, small, but successful, and the evaluations that we received back from the vendors was positive. Over half of them would return next year. So I wanted to thank the city for their help and all the sponsors, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Other than thank you for paving the library road. I appreciate that. Thank you.
There's no other individuals to address the council. I have no other cards. Next item is discussion.
Mr. Mayor, before we close the public comment, I guess I'm kind of curious. We've at, we've been at this now two months, this new structure for meetings, starting at 6:00, starting public comment at the end of the meeting, which I might add, tonight is about a half an hour earlier than it would have been at a regular meeting under the old schedule, so even though it's at the end of the meeting, I'd just be interested if anyone has any thoughts or comments you'd like to make to us about this new arrangement for public comment.
That's a good point. We are all interested in the public's reaction to this.
Because it's a trial through, till January. Because it's a trial through, till January.
Having seen this.
And you're next. I'm sorry.
Having, I used to work for the mayor of Long Beach when I lived in Long Beach. And so I used to prep the council chambers and do all that stuff. So having seen a meeting that works in the opposite, where, I guess, in the opposite of what your new experiment is, I can tell you that it may, when heated items come up, it's going to extend your meeting time because the public comment will go on and on and on. But I think it's for, in terms of the city's business, I think it's a more efficient way to get it done because you guys get through your business and the city's business is handled. And if you have to sit here an extra 15, 20 minutes to listen to the public's concerns, so be it. But at least your, the city's business is handled at that point. Okay? And if I may, while I have the mic, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you for the Nisqually-La Mesa Interchange. I can't tell you, as a resident of Victorville that's near Palmdale and Elavata, how much easier that has made my life. Second of all, my name is-
You're the first, by the way.
Huh?
You're the first to come up and thank us.
Oh. I, I shouldn't be. I shouldn't be like the 101st. Believe me, it's made a huge difference. But I wanted to kind of introduce yourself, myself, and tell you why I'm here and what I'm all about. And anyway, my name is Timothy Kirby. I'm a new member of the Victor Valley Association of Realtors. I work at Agio Real Estate. My broker is Carrie Leon. She is the newly-elected board president for the, for 2014. And I told her that I was interested in serving on a committee, and she asked me where my interests lie, and I said government relations. And so she said, well, you know, show me some incentive, which is what I'm here doing. So I'll be hopefully attending, just to kind of, you know, see from the real estate perspective what you guys are doing and how we can help and work conduct, you know, conducively together. And in terms of the transit, I know that was all about, you know, consolidating the units. But I wanted to ask a question, if I may, and it may not be something you're prepared to answer, but why not throw it out there? Is there any plans to improve transit down the hill and maybe to Fort Irwin?
There's an individual who will go out in the hallway and have a discussion with you about that item. If you have the time, he will take the time to-
I would love to. Thank you so much.
Kevin, raise your hand so he sees you.
Yeah, he did. Thank you. Marge? Marge, I, sorry. If your comments are picked up by the microphone, we'll consider them. I'm not sure we picked them up.
They won't be picked up.
They won't be picked up. Well, send us a little card. We're interested in what you have to say. Any other items?
I can make a note of that.
Okay, make a note of that. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, are you having any further comments? Okay, at this point, then I will close this section of the agenda and move on to the discussion. Possible action items regarding items to the upcoming City Council agenda. Start with Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember McEckern.
Yes, if we could just get an update either written or verbally in front of the council at our, a future meeting on how the proactive code enforcement is going. I continue to see tattered banners and flags and you name it, all over town. And I, I know that you were going to enact that. I'd just like to know what the update is and where you're at and actually dealing with that, because I know that there's a process that you have to go through with the business owners, so.
We're also actively recruiting two new code enforcement officers. I think we have interviews coming up very soon.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't realize we hadn't hired them yet, so that's probably part of it.
It takes us a little while.
Yes, apparently it does.
Councilmember Vias?
None at this time.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Just one thing. I'd be interested in staff's, whatever information you have on the relief that we're experiencing on Palmdale Road and Bear Valley Road as a result of the interchange. My information is anecdotal. I drive up and down that hill four or five days a week. Used to be at 6 o'clock, traffic was backed up at Bear Valley Road, half a mile onto the freeway. And now, when I drive by, the traffic stops about halfway down the off-ramp. So it appears to me that the improvement on Bear Valley Road has been tremendous. I don't know if we have any statistics, and I'm really disappointed that we heard for the first time tonight, thanks for building this thing. I, I just think everybody's got to be enjoying some benefit from it.
I do know that, that our engineering staff who have cameras that they can view the traffic in order to make improvements, they noticed it literally the day that, that the interchange opened. They noticed the difference of the Bear Valley Road and the freeway bridge. So I believe at this point, they're still waiting for the, all of the lights to be synced, and they want to get to some, some sort of final traffic counts now that everyone understands it's open and knows when they should and shouldn't use it. And I'm sure they'll be happy to provide that information as soon as we get that data collected.
Looking forward to it.
If I could just add to that, I don't know how we do it or by what means we do it, but could someone communicate to the businesses over in Foxborough Industrial Park and to those truck drivers that they can get off at La Mesa-Nisqually instead of Bear Valley? Because I still continue to see them traveling down this Bear Valley Road, churning left on Asparia, and it just boggles the mind as to why they haven't figured out yet that they've got a new interchange. It's a truck route. That's what it was built for, envisioned for. So somehow, we need to get the message to all the, all the truck drivers that are going in and out of that facility that they have a new interchange they can utilize. It'll make their lives all that much better, and those of the traveling motorists on Bear Valley Road even, even better.
And we can certainly send a letter over to all those businesses to make sure that they let their, their drivers. Now, I do know that some of those delivery trucks, they aren't from this area, so their GPS mapping may not even show that interchange yet.
Up yet, yeah.
That may be true. I, I recently noticed three big trucks going westerly on Seneca, turning off of Asparia Road. I made a U-turn and followed them because I couldn't imagine they were delivery trucks, and they were headed for the freeway. So I thought, well, the interchange must be closed. Something is happening. And there was an inordinate number of truckers turning on Green Tree Boulevard. So they saw the crowd and decided Seneca's the new truck route. So we need to start looking at what is a truck route, what isn't. Code enforcement? Because we have spent millions of dollars to improve our traffic patterns, and we don't need truckers wandering through neighborhoods. The other thing, which wandering through neighborhoods, there seems to be more and more trucks parked in residential areas. I have no idea why, but I get those calls from irate people. So be it. I'll turn on a list if you want them, but I know your guys are out there looking for them, so, thank you. Other items? If not, we will go to the report for the city, from the city manager.
Staff has no additional comments this time? I know, you're shocked.
Wow.
Report from the City Council members, and we'll start on the right with Councilmember Kennedy. Thank you. Councilmember Vias?
Nothing.
From McEckern.
No, nothing.
Garcia. That concludes our meeting. Thank you very much for coming and participating. We appreciate your time. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, careful, as I say, concludes. We do need to go back into closed session.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We do have to go into closed session. We, individuals can stay. There will be a report out of closed session, but at this point in time, it's a continuation of the discussion we were having. We do not-
The closed session meeting of the City Council has concluded. There is no reportable action, and the meeting stands adjourned.